Welcome. Hey, so I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the signal behind the camera like one, two, you know, so anyways, or we could just do like one of these closers. So hey, welcome back to Joshua Bible Study, Part Seven. Super excited to be in the Book of Joshua, the Book of Yeshua. Uh, the book that is the first historical book in your Bible. Uh, the first five books obviously have history and historical information, but from a historical journey of the Israelites as they leave Egypt, as they leave slavery, and enter into the Promised Land, the Book of Joshua is uh, the very first book to kind of give us details about that. And so, thank you so much for joining us. If this is your first time, please visit our website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. Go to the video tool, uh, dropdown and you'll see the study in Joshua. Right there's some notes for tonight's study. Just click on PDF, number seven, and uh, you can print out the notes. If you'd like to be on our mailing list, uh, my dad, my faithful dad, James, he sends out a mailing list. Uh, every time that we do a Bible study, we have, I believe, over a hundred people on that mailing list. And if you want to join that, uh, or yeah, I more than that, we have, uh, if you want to join that, then we'll send you the notes, put them in your, in your uh, email box, and you can print them from there. So grab your Bible, grab something to write with, and uh, let's dive into this study in the Book of Joshua. Uh, Holy Spirit, we pray that you would open our ears, open our hearts, our minds, and uh, God just give us insight into your word, so that we can know how to navigate through the world that we live in, in Jesus' name. Just to bring you up to speed just a little bit, the Book of Joshua is paralleled spiritually with the New Testament Book of Ephesians. And the Book of Joshua also is a prophetic book that will parallel much of the Book of Revelation in the end time, physical and spiritual battles. So when you look back at the Book of Joshua, you see a very much of a physical conquest of land. When you spiritually today, when you look at the Book of Ephesians, it is a spiritual conquest of dominion in the spirit. When you fast forward to the book, the prophetic book of Revelation, then it is a dual book of physical conquest by Jesus Christ the King, who comes back and physically takes back his terrain, his earth, his territory. But it's also a spiritual battle where he defeats Satan and his minions once and for all. So we'll see these three books are very much in sync with each other, just very different um, uh, explanations for us to follow. So grab your, if you've missed any of our previous studies, please listen to them. We're gonna kick back, uh, pick back up in Joshua, Chapter Six. We're gonna start off in verse fifteen. So for the first fifteen verses, they're, they're kind of prepping for battle. And so now's the big day, now's the big day. Uh, the seventh day, it's come to pass, they rose early about the dawning of the day, they marched around the city seven times in the same manner. And on that day, on that day, on the seventh day, the seventh time, the priests blew the trumpets, then Joshua said to his people, shout, and the people, uh, for the Lord has given you the city. This Jericho shout is what we're talking about, what we have been talking about. The shout in your spirit, when you shout to the Lord, when you sing to the Lord, when you declare to the Lord, you are breaking down walls of Jericho in your own life. You're breaking down walls that are keeping something in or keeping something out. Walls serve two different purposes. They can, they can, uh, you know, keep you trapped behind them, or they could prevent you from getting in them. As the body of Christ, the gates of hell will not prevail against us. So we have full dominion. We have full rights through the name of Jesus to break down any obstruction, any, yeah, anything that's in our way. We break that down in the name of Jesus. And so when we look at Hebrews twelve, I want to ask the question, Chuck Missler, and, and I don't mention him enough, Chuck Missler on YouTube has a great uh, Joshua Bible study, but Chuck asked this question, he says, who really took the walls of Jericho down? You know, the old song, Joshua fought the Battle of Jericho. He did fight the Battle of Jericho, but who do we know in verse, in chapter five, who do we know went to war on behalf? It's Jesus Christ. This is an Old Testament appearance of Jesus. And Jesus is going, and Jesus is truly the one that shouts when the people shout. And the shout of God breaks the walls of the city. That's exactly what happens in our lives. When we tithe, God's money backs up our little hundred dollar offering. When we have stepped out of the boat like Peter did in faith, God's supernatural power allows us to walk on water. When we pray a prayer of faith and we lay our hands on sick people and we command the dead to rise, it's Jesus Christ that raises them or heals them. When we speak the gospel, you, you've shared the gospel and it's come out, you know, it came out in bits and pieces and fragments, and it wasn't as eloquent as Billy Graham or Charles Spurgeon, but, but the Spirit of God takes our fumbled words and transforms it and puts them into the heart of another man or woman, and it changes their life. God broke the walls of Jericho. Look at Hebrews, Chapter Twelve, Verse Twenty-Six. This is speaking of Jesus, when Jesus whose voice then shook the earth. Well, this references, this is the one time that God shakes the earth with his voice. It says, then whose voice once shook the earth, talking about this Battle of Jericho, but now he is promised, talking about revelation. So the writer of Hebrews in this, Chapter Twelve, Verse Twenty-Six says, hey, remember when Jesus shook the earth? Well, hey, if he shook the earth once, get ready. He says, yet once more I shake not only the earth, but heaven. Now, we're gonna enter into a description and some, some, uh, a couple sessions on, uh, we're gonna pick back up and, and on fallen angels and and the Nephilim and the giants of old that are in this Promised Land. But when this verse says that once more God will shake earth and heaven, let's really just visit that for a minute. This is talking about the return of Christ. So the return of Christ, if you can imagine, Jesus Christ, Yeshua, Joshua, Yeshua, Jesus Christ. Now, I'm not saying Jesus is Joshua, but the parallel or the, the similar names here is a, is a, is a shadow in the Old Testament of what Jesus will do. As Joshua led millions of Jewish Israelite slaves across the Jordan into the Promised Land, catch the wording there, uh, the old hymnals, the old hymns would say, you know, when you go over the Jordan, over the Jordan, crossing over the Jordan. Well, we, we use that reference as, hey, they crossed the Jordan, that means they went to heaven, they died. Well, everybody that's died before you and I that knows Jesus Christ, let's just say he's gonna return in five minutes. Well, Jesus Christ is gonna cross back over the Jordan, if you will, with his armies, with his people, with his old earthly slaves, his old earthly men and women who were beat down, but they got saved by the blood of Jesus. He's gonna return and destroy those who are inhabiting his Promised Land, the earth, his territory. Those who are against him, he will destroy them, move them, so he won't just shake earth one more time, but he will also dispossess heaven of any angelic being or supernatural being and throw them into the lake of fire. Now, I know I just said a lot, but I really want you to see the, the similarity here. This is Joshua going this way over the Jordan, revelation will be this way, Jesus coming back. So this Promised Land is the territory of the Jewish people today. But the earth is Jesus Christ, the Yeshua. Jesus Christ, the earth is his territory, not just, uh, you know, a few, uh, you know, uh, acres, if you will, on planet earth. His, the earth is his. So this, this verse in Hebrews is really powerful. It says, not only once will I shake the earth again, but also heaven. He'll shake the foundations of any supernatural being that is against him also. Um, look down to verse seventeen, I'm, I'm kind of recapping just a little bit, but I want to bring this back out because this hit me, I've never really realized this till this study. But in seventeen, it says, now the city shall be doomed by the Lord's destruction, it and all who are in it. Only Rahab the harlot will live, she and all who are with her in her house, because she hid the two messengers of God. Listen, it's powerful, powerful, powerful. Back in Chapter Five, when Jesus Christ shows up to Joshua, and Joshua's just kind of walking through the woods, trying to wonder, you know, kind of wondering how he's gonna defeat Jericho, and all of a sudden he walks up, he comes upon a man with his sword drawn, and Joshua approaches him and says, hey man, whose side are you on? Our side, the Jewish side, the good people's side, are you on those evil people's side over there? And the, and the guy there turns out to be Jesus Christ, and, and Joshua bows and worships, and Jesus says, I'm not on anybody's side, but as commander of the Lord's army, I'm here. And, and so Joshua realizes, oh my God, I'm not talking to a man, I'm talking to God. Falls and worships. Here, here's what Jesus was saying. Anybody that turns to me is on my side. Jew or Gentile. Rahab the harlot is a Jerichoan, or however you want to say that. She lives, her family, she's saved because she gives her heart to God. So therefore, all the people, just like in Sodom and Gomorrah, just like in Noah's ark, the masses of people will not acknowledge God. But those that did, he rescued. He said, he said, you're on my side. So we're approaching this battle, uh, we're approaching the, the climax of this battle. They've circled. Uh, oh, so as he saves Rahab, also, we haven't got there, but in our, our next session or two, we'll see where a Jewish guy named Achan completely disobeys God, and so therefore, he's against God. So it doesn't matter what your nationality is, it doesn't matter what your bloodline is, it doesn't matter uh, who your parents are, it doesn't matter, it matters, are you aligned with Jesus Christ or not? Can I get an amen? Okay, so here we go, verse eighteen, let's pick up. This is new territory for us. And you by all means, this is still instruction. Okay, so let me set the stage. So Joshua's been given instructions by the Lord, now he's giving it to the people. He's told the people, hey, listen, you're gonna circle, you're gonna shout, or the trumpets are gonna blow, you're gonna shout, and as soon as the walls fall, now, ju- hear the faith, hear the faith of Joshua. No bulldozer, no, you know, big tree trunk busting down, no uh, giant wrecking ball, no, just, we're gonna shout! And when the walls fall, which had never happened before, they'd never seen this, they didn't have a, you know, a Google app on how to make Jericho walls fall. This was faith. He said, now, when you hear the walls fall, you're gonna go straight up and you're gonna destroy everybody in your way. Now, listen to what he tells them not to do, verse eighteen. He says, and you by all means abstain from the accursed thing, lest you become accursed when you take of the accursed things and make the camp of Israel a curse and trouble it. Now, that's a, that's a large thing. What's the accursed thing? What's he talking about? Hey, listen, Israeli soldiers, when the walls fall, you go in, you destroy the enemy. Listen, don't take that shiny golden god that they have on their altar. Don't take that little handmade wooden uh, lucky charm and say, ooh, I like that, I'll take that. Don't go into their pagan temple where they've got golden goblets and they've got, uh, you know, diamond uh, plated, uh, you know, altars, and they've got, don't go take something that is accursed. Now, this would have been outlined in, in the Old Testament, I mean, in the first five books. This, you know, the accursed things would have been outlined in the Torah. But hey, listen, when you go into enemy territory, just because it looks good to the eye, just because it may be extremely rare and valuable, don't take that thing and bring it back. Now, what God is gonna teach the Israelites here, we're gonna go into depth, it's the first fruits offering. Now, let me read the next verse, then we're gonna kind of come back. He says, uh, by all means, let me just reread. By all means abstain from the accursed things lest you become accursed. When you take of the accursed things and make the camp of Israel, we'll come back to that, a curse and trouble it. But all the silver and all the gold and all the vessels of bronze and iron are consecrated to the Lord. They shall come into the treasury of the Lord. Hey soldier, when you, when you, uh, you know, see that, that golden necklace around that, that other guy's neck, don't take that, that's not yours. When you see those gold coins on the floor, don't take that. J- oh, when you see that really cool painting, that's not yours to take. When you see that thing. So, when we talk about accursed things, this is what happened. He says, don't take that which God says is not yours. So I want you to write down on your paper, don't take what's not mine. Now, that's not just theft from somebody else. One of the Ten Commandments is thou shalt not steal. We've all been taught since birth, or as a young kid, give that back, you know, that's not yours. Do not steal, you need to work to earn it. You, if you steal something, then you're considered a thief, and then you'll lie, and you'll, you'll, so that is wrong. We all know and grasp really well this concept of not stealing from other people. But something that has eluded us, and something that has crept in into our American mindset, in church, out of church, is we don't really think about robbing God. We don't think about taking what belongs to God. So therefore, we just kind of chalk that up as, oh, God doesn't really care. Those were some good rules for way back then, but it doesn't really matter to me now. Well, God is telling the Israelites, hey, listen, everything in Jericho, this first city, this is city one, this is battle number one. City one, battle number one, everything in the city belongs to me. And if you take anything, it will be a curse to you. Now, well, let me, let me back up. If you take anything, it will already be accursed. Everything in the city was already cursed. That's where we gotta start. And if you take it, then you'll be cursed. Now, now, this is, this is deep theology. This is a message that a lot of people don't want to hear, and, and a lot of times, I don't want to hear it, because we want what we want. But God said this, let, let, it says this, he says, by all means, look at verse eighteen, read it in your own Bible. By all means abstain, don't partake from the accursed things. Everything in the city was already cursed. Well, how could their couch be cursed? How could their, uh, you know, the little, uh, uh, pitcher hanging on the wall be cursed? How could, how could the bracelet be cursed? I mean, that doesn't make sense, they're just objects. It doesn't make sense, because we don't understand the principle. The objects are cursed because they didn't honor God. And it wasn't a city devoted to God. So therefore, everything in that city was already cursed. And he says, listen, don't take that. And then, i- i- because Cameron, if you take that, then it will curse you, you'll be cursed. And then it goes a step further, and then you'll make the entire camp of Israel cursed, and you'll bring trouble upon us. Do you remember the story of Jonah? Jonah went the wrong direction, so therefore, the journey became cursed. For Jonah and all the other sailors, the storm starts to destroy the boats, they start to cast lots. The lots land on, on Jonah, and Jonah says, yeah, I'm disobeying God right now. They're like, dude, get out of the boat. So they chunk him out of the boat, the sto- the, the storm stops, he gets swallowed by a whale. All the sailor men are like, woo, God, why did we let that accursed Jonah on the boat? I wish we could have passed through the curse detector, not just the metal detector. See, what, what I'm getting at is that a lot of times we think, well, what I do just affects me. That's a great saying. You know, oh, you know, what you do, as long as you agree with it, it doesn't hurt you. Listen, when I as an, as an individual bring an accursed movie into my house, when I bring an accursed object into my house, when I bring something that's unholy into my house, I'm not just affecting me, I'm affecting my entire family. I'm not just affecting my family, I'm affecting my street. I'm not just affecting my street, I'm affecting my neighborhood, my city, my region. We won't chase the rabbit, but that's why God's gonna separate sheep nations from goat nations. Hear me. What you do affects your entire church. The camp of Israel here means the church also, God's elect, his chosen. So, so if, if a church body is, is just full of people who are continuing to bring accursed things into it, it's going to manifest, it's gonna have a result, it's gonna have an effect. We'll see this more in Chapter Seven with, with Achan. But look at some of the questions I have on your notes. Um, what is the consequence today of taking accursed things? Well, we'll talk about money in just a minute, because a lot of us are, have cursed um, uh, money, and a lot of us have cursed our own finances in the realm of money, because we continue to take what's not ours. But let's set money aside for a minute. I want us to just look at the next one, number three. Do demons attach themselves to trinkets, figurines, or items? I want to emphatically say to you, yes. There are certain items that don't belong in the believer's house. Now, many of us have gone on vacation to foreign countries, uh, and we see a painting, or we see a trinket, uh, and we see something that looks really cool. And so we buy it, but we don't really understand that that might have been a carved figurine to a god that they worship. Oh, well, they don't really worship, that's their old, their old tradition. But we're still bringing that god into our house, and we may stuck it in a drawer, put it in the attic, and you, you buy the stuff, you get home, you're like, I would never hang this up in my house. Why did I think I like, you know, you, you know what I mean? But, but we gotta beware, there's a lot of books that don't belong in our house. There's a lot of novels, uh, from children's novels to adult novels that don't belong in our house. And I'm not just talking about pornography, but, but in the realm of websites and, and things, we've got to be very careful as believers. What we just bring, because we don't want to bring something that is accursed. There are, uh, and, and, and I, there are entryways and doorways that spirits use. And sometimes it could come from a record album, sometimes it could come from a letter. Um, let me, let me say it like this. One time I received a letter, and the second I read the letter, I knew that it was an attack from the enemy. And so, the first letter like that I got, I read the whole thing, and I'm like, oh my God, you know, what a, and then I start to react, I'm like, this letter brought this message. There's other times that I've done better, where I'm like, you know what, I'm not even reading it. After the first verse, or the first sentence or two, I realized that, hey, this is not going anywhere, I'll throw them away. Because I'm not gonna bring that into my mind. I'm not gonna bring it into my drawer, put it in my desk, and then, and then two weeks later, read it again, and then three weeks later, read it again, and then I'm not gonna have old pictures of, of, you know, my sinful lifestyle hidden away in a, in a box somewhere and, and go, oh yeah, remember this? And it's gonna show me, you know, sinning in that picture. I'm not gonna do some things. And so I want you to, to really be cautious what we bring into our house. So I won't say anymore. Okay. Uh, verse four, or, or question four. Um, why was all the silver, gold, bronze, and iron consecrated to God? Now, take a, take a marker, or take something, underline that word consecrate. Um, I'm not really prepared to do a message on tithing, but I'm gonna tackle tithing very directly and very kind of quickly and succinctly with this group on this, on this, um, teaching. Tithing is a mandate from God. When Adam and Eve sinned, the land became cursed. When Adam and Eve had to leave the Garden of Eden, the land would not produce for Adam anymore. Adam had to, at that moment, work, and by the sweat of his brow, he would produce or, or uh, get food from the ground. Prior to that, the ground did all the work. After the curse, Adam had to do the work. So as beautiful as oak trees are, as beautiful as the redwood forests are, as beautiful as the Amazon, the the deserts, the, the Rockies, the Grand Canyon, as beautiful as our world is, as beautiful as antelope are, and, and uh, elephants, and, and giraffes, and as beautiful as God's creation is, as beautiful as you are and as I am, we're still all under the curse. We're all suffering from the curse. Oak trees don't grow to their majestic size that they did in the Garden of Eden. Waterfalls don't, don't flow, uh, fish don't grow, oxygen, or the, the, um, uh, there's a lot of, I, there's a lot of, anyways, things don't grow to the, to the magnitude and the size that they once did, because they're under a curse. Well, money is part of that. So if I go today and I work for my employer, and my employer gives me a hundred dollars for my hard work today, or at the end of the week, every Friday, every Friday he gives me a hundred dollars. That hundred dollars is cursed. Not because my employer's bad, not because it's got, you know, uh, weird Masonic pictures on the dollar bill. I'm not talking about all that. It's cursed because it's, it's from the ground. If I got paid in, in fruit, or chickens, or, or vegetables, it doesn't matter. The point is, it's cursed until I consecrate it. What's that consecration look like? God set this up in the Old Testament. And it's still for today, it didn't end one day. That consecration is the tithe. So the first ten dollars of my hundred dollar paycheck on Friday, that's God's money. It's all God's money, but the first ten goes back to the church, goes back to his storehouse. That's the place we take it, and then he consecrates it. And he consecrates that, and it blesses the other ninety dollars that I live off of. That is a basic summary of tithing. Tithing is not to pay the bills at the church. We don't take our tithe and say, well, I'm gonna give two dollars to the church, I'm gonna give two dollars to that, uh, um, orphanage down the street, I'm gonna give another two dollars. You don't, you don't take that ten dollar tithe. It's to the storeroom, to the storehouse, to the house of God. Now, anything above that is called giving. So there's tithes and there's offerings. Offerings is anything above the tithe. So when we support a child, uh, through a food program, you know, Children's International, uh, or, or Driven International, or, uh, the Bite, uh, or Healing Honduras, when we support those people, we don't give them our tithe, the tithe belongs to the house of God. We give those people, or those ministries, our offering. If I'm gonna help pay somebody's bills, I don't use the tithe to do it, I use my offering. My point is this, look at, look at what it says, I'll, I'll just read it, because I know some people are going, whoa, what, what are you talking about? But just look at the last part of verse nineteen. But all the silver, all the gold, vessels of bronze and iron are consecrated to the Lord. They shall come into the treasury of the Lord. That's the house of God. They didn't use the word church back then. That was where the temple was, where the Ark of the Covenant was. That's where the, the priests were, that was where the tabernacle was. That same word is used in Malachi, it's called the storehouse, several different places. Here's the point. Jericho, write this down, Jericho represents the tithe for the entire Promised Land. Jericho represents the tithe for the entire Promised Land. So a tenth, if you will, of the Promised Land was, was conquered, and all of that tenth belongs to God. God didn't tell Joshua, hey, well, take what you want and bring the leftovers to me. A lot of us, we pay our bills first, and then we give the leftovers to God. Well, I didn't have that much to put in the plate. It's not about putting it in the plate. It's not about, hey, the church needs your money. No, not at all. The tithe consecrates the rest. We're gonna see that practicality, that it's so practical, it's so clear. But please hear this, before the consecration, it's cursed. Now, let's take this one step further away from money, so nobody can say, oh, well, that's not, listen, when we're born, are we born? When we're born, are we born holy? Or are we born unholy? Do we have a holy nature or a sinful nature? Everybody that's born from the day we're conceived in our mama's womb, to the day we're birthed. To the day everybody goo-goo's and ahs-ahs and, and loves on us and smothers us with kisses. As beautiful as our babies are, as beautiful as my newest grandson Jericho is. He has a sin nature. They have a sin nature. At some day soon, he will smack his friend in the head with his, with his Tonka truck and say, mine! And his mom and dad will have to say, now, baby, sweet little baby, we don't smack our friends in the head with a Tonka truck. It's mine, it's mine, you know. We gotta teach our kids to share, we gotta teach them to love, we gotta teach them to be patient, kind, all these things. Why? Because naturally, from Adam, from the fall. We have messed this thing up inside. So until we get saved, now, now hear me this, or hear this, until we give our sin. Our cursed nature to Jesus at the cross, we're not consecrated. So we can't get saved. We can't get into heaven, we can't get into the promised land, we can't inherit the blessing if we're not consecrated by the blood of Jesus. It's a big word that just simply means covered in the blood of Jesus. And it redeems us, it redeems us from our sinful nature and turns us into a Christ regenerated being, a new. Creation in Christ Jesus, can I get an amen? So when we go into the promised land, we don't get to go there because we did good things, it's because we were consecrated with, by the blood of Jesus. We could do this a hundred different ways, but that's what this principle is showing us, Jericho's the tithe. Now, look at, look at one other, uh, word, ver- or number five on your notes, it says. What is the big benefit of honoring God first? Listen, some of you are like, well, I give a tenth, but is it the first tenth? Listen, it's not legalism. It's, God pays you through your employer, well, I worked hard, I know you worked hard, but God gave you the brain, he gave you the muscles, he gave you the job. That first ten dollars is the only ten dollars that can consecrate the rest of it. If I take the first ten dollars and I buy this and the next ten to buy that, and I get all the way down the line, I'm like, oh. That last ten dollars cannot consecrate the hundred. It's the first fruits tithe. Now this word first fruits, I wanna bring this to life. Um, you can read the Malachi chapter by, or verse in your notes by yourself, but switch over to Genesis, chapter one, verse twenty-eight. And, and I want you to write just real big first fruits on your notes. Because the first fruits offering is vital to our walk with God. When you first wake up in the morning, that should be your time dedicated, consecrated to God. When you first fruits, listen to this, Genesis one twenty-eight. Then God blessed them, and God said to them, be fruitful, multiply, fill the earth, subdue it. Have dominion over the fish, over the sea, over the birds of the air, and every living thing that moves on the earth. Be fruitful, be mul- uh, multiply. Now look at Romans eight twenty-three, here we go. Uh, Romans eight twenty-three. Not only that, but we also who have the first fruits of the Spirit. Romans eight twenty-three, not only that, but we also have the first fruits of the Spirit. Even we ourselves grown within ourselves eagerly waiting for the adoption, the redemption of our body. There's a guy named Colin Smith, I, I found this quote off, 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 uh, off the internet. He summarizes it really, really well, listen to this, I'm gonna tie these together, just stay with me. On the day of Pentecost, the Holy Spirit fell, not just on the apostles, but on all the believers, that's key. This was the beginning of the harvest that would come through Jesus's death and resurrection. Later, Paul takes up this theme and says that the Holy Spirit given to us is the first fruits. We're gonna keep going, listen, this is gonna be lengthy, but stay with me, first Corinthians fifteen. But now Christ is risen from the dead. And has become the first fruits of those who have fallen asleep, we'll stop right there. When Christ rose from the dead, who raised him? Nobody. When Lazarus raised from the dead, when Jesus was walking the earth, when Lazarus was ro- ra- uh, was brought back to life, who raised him from the dead? Jesus. When Jesus comes back to life, he conquered death, so therefore, nothing stopped him or nothing more powerful brought him out. He was resurrected, the resurrection was him conquering death. So he's the first of millions, billions who will do the same. When you and I die, we will be resurrected as Jesus was. When we get baptized, we're, we're born again, we're brought up out of the grave. So Jesus is the firstborn of us. Who did it first? Jesus Christ. Who was the tithe? Who was the first fruits offering of God? Jesus Christ. The first fruit offering of God, for God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son. That whosoever believes will not perish, not die, but have everlasting or eternal life. When Jesus Christ died on the cross, he was God's tithe to redeem you and I. Because we needed to be consecrated. So when he rose from the dead, he was the first to rise from the dead, why? Because you and I will rise to the dead, from the dead, when, and, and spend eternity with God. Look at what it says, but now Christ is risen from the dead and has become the first fruits of those who have fallen asleep or died. For since by man came death, by man also came resurrection of the dead. For as in Adam all die, so in Christ all shall live. But each one his own order, first, a Christ, the first fruits. Afterwards, those who are Christ at his coming. Then comes the end, when he delivers the kingdom to the Father, when he puts an end to the rule of all authority and power, for he must reign. Till he puts his enemies under his feet. The last enemy that will be destroyed is death, for he has put all things under his feet. But when he says all things are put under him, it is evident that he who put all things under him is accepted, expected. Accepted, sorry, ex- I can't read that word, yes, thank you. Now when all things are made subject to him, the Son himself will also be subject to him who puts all things under him, that God may be all in all. It's a lot of stuff, we're not gonna digest all this tonight, but what it's saying is that Jesus Christ did it first. First fruits offering, I've got another one, Colossians one eighteen, stay with me. Cause this is theological depth, but let's just grab hold of it and let's let it sink in as much as possible. As Jesus is the head of the body, the Christ, or the church, he is the beginning, the firstborn from the dead. That in everything he might be preeminent, in everything that he might be first. This idea of first fruits offering, I hope I've made my point. This city belonged to God, why? Because he's greedy, because God wants the best, no, 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 because God wants the first. And the first, if he didn't get the first, the rest never would've been blessed. Your finances need to be blessed, your day needs to be blessed, your marriage needs to be blessed. Things in our house need to be blessed, we need to kick out the cursed things. We need to consecrate the things that need to be blessed, can I get an amen? Here we go, uh, verse twenty, back in your Bible, chapter six, verse twenty. So when the people shouted. The priests blew their trumpets, and it happened when they heard the sound of the trumpet, the great shout, the walls fell flat. Then people went up into the city, every man straight before them. They took the city and they utterly destroyed all that was in the city, now brace yourself. They took the city and utterly destroyed all that were in the city, man and woman, young and old. Ox, sheep, donkey, with the edge of the sword. That's a hard verse for a lot of people to digest. It's a hard verse because it makes God, uh, it makes people question, well, what, what, why? Why did we kill the women and the children? Why, why did ev- why did the donkeys die? Why did everything? In order to answer that question, we've got to understand the, the, the gravity of the Bible in, in, in its whole. In its entirety. And we've gotta grasp the, the bloodline to Jesus Christ. So when we are going to enter into, over the next few sessions, we're gonna enter, into a study about the Nephilim and the giants. We're gonna talk about how the enemy started to pervert the people groups and the bloodlines. God had already judged these people's hearts. We saw the grace of God, he didn't just go in and, and wipe them out without first judging and weighing their hearts. He weighed each person's heart and says, oh, Rahab loves me. I will protect her and her entire family, if there had been forty-eight other people, he would've protected all them. If there'd have been ten thousand people that loved him, he would've protected them all. There's a judgment day for all of us. And it may not seem fair if that judgment day comes early. Or if that judgment day comes too late for some, some, sometime we say the good die young and, and the bad live forever, you know, or whatever, listen. Regardless of our time to go, God's weight our heart, that's why we have to change today. So we're gonna study, uh, and understand the corruption of the bloodline. So when I talk about the bloodline, we're gonna talk about giants, the Nephilim, fallen angels, watcher angels, these different. Uh, types of angels that are in our Bible and, and, um. And really grasp this idea that God is eradicating Satan's seed, he's eradicating those who are in opposition to not the Israelites. But to the Israelites' God. Read the story of David and Goliath and see, who does Goliath hate the most, the God of the Israelites or the Israelites? It's about removing that which was opposed to God. I think we talked about this a couple sessions ago. Ra- Rahab, uh, in Matthew one, for the ladies watching, uh, ladies. Extremely rare and, and not even in the, in the midst of, uh, of normal anything. In Matthew chapter one, read it for yourself, it's the genealogy to Jesus. You'll see Rahab's name in there. You'll also see three other women's names in the genealogy to Jesus. It's a testament that God, excuse me. It's a testament to God's sal- saving grace for all people. But it's also a testimony to women and his value on women, regardless of Jewish culture or Jewish tradition. So the fact that Rahab's name is in Matthew chapter one is just a point I like to bring out. But I want you to go read that, and then I want you to do a study, ladies. I want you to study Tamar, I want you to study Ruth, and I want you to study the wife of Uriah, and those, that, those are the, the names that are in there. Study their past, and you'll, you'll kinda come up with, with an interesting, um, uh. Uh, bottom line, well, I can't think of the word, they all have very much the same thing in common. And so answer that question for yourself, what do those four ladies have in common? Um, and, and I think you'll find that very surprising, um, here we go. Verse twenty-two, Joshua said to the two men who spied on the country, go into the harlot's house. And from there, bring out the women and all that she has as you swore to her. And the young men who had this, who had been spies, went into the house of Rahab, brought her father, her mother, her brothers. And all that she had, so they brought out her relatives and left them outside the camp of Israel. But they burned the city and all that were in it with fire. This correlation is the identical to Jesus Christ, when he returns, he will judge by what? By fire. Only the silver, gold, vessels of bronze and iron will be put into the treasury of the Lord. Joshua spared Rahab the harlot, her father, household, and all she had, so she dwells in Israel to this day. It's powerful, because she hid the messengers whom Joshua sent to spy out Jericho. Listen to this last verse, then Joshua charged them one last time. Curse it, be the man before the Lord who rises up and builds this city back. Cursed is the person that comes back and rebuilds Jericho. He shall lay its foundation with his firstborn, and with his youngest, he shall set up its gates. Now you, if you wanna do some digging in your Bible, go find out what happened to the guy that rebuilds Jericho. Prophecy is fulfilled, it's powerful. Here's what I wanna end with tonight, I wanna, I wanna end with this, um, this thought process. When we talk about land, uh, and, and I am, I'm trying to put together a, an outline. Uh, the best I can to talk to us about the bloodline. And you've heard me mention this a lot over the last few months, but, uh, I, I just believe by demand and by people's questions. That I'm gonna just continue to hammer this thing home. When we talk about the promised land, I wanna bring up some things, that Abraham was given this land over six hundred years earlier. God himself meets Abraham on a mountain, he says, do you see this land, for as far as this river, this mountain range to this. Everything that you see is yours, I mean, everything that you see is the promised land for you and your children. We see Sodom and Gomorrah, we see the children, we see Jacob, uh, being born, we see the twelve sons of Jacob, we see this. The, the brothers betraying Joseph and throwing him in a pit, we see him going to Egypt, we see the brothers and the tribes of Israel reunited. Uh, we see them live peacefully with Pharaoh until he dies. And then a new Pharaoh gets intimidated by the Jews, and they start to grow in, in numbers, and so he enslaves them all. And then we see this hor- horrendous time period where the Jews, the Israelites are slaves of Egypt. But we see God's deliverer Moses come up, and we see him lead them into the promised land, this is a six hundred year progression. Now what did Satan do during that six hundred years? He sent pagan worshippers, people that did not love God, to inhabit the land that God gave them. This land is extremely, uh, vital today, it's still in conqu- uh, it's still in, in battle today. Israel and the nation is, is still in, you know, um, you know, disgruntlement with its neighbors. There's contention is the word I'm looking for. So when Satan is inhabiting this land, who does he inhabit it with? Well, he inhabits with giants, and we'll read that, you can read a lot about it in Joshua and in Judges. But you'll, you'll see that these, these, uh, pagan cities start to be erected all over the land to prevent God's children from inhabiting it. And so when we talk about, what did, what did the giants play? When we, when we look at the character of Goliath, and, and you may have heard me say this before, but just please hear it one more time. Goliath was not just a big guy. He wa- he didn't just, wasn't just corn fed, raised in the, you know, the, the south, he, he didn't, he didn't just eat a lot. He was big, he was around ten feet tall. The, uh, his armor, uh, I think just like his, his breastplate weighed like eighty pounds. The, I think if I remember right, the spearhead on, on his like six foot long javelin was a fifteen pound. Spearhead, it'd be like having the, a bowling ball on the end of a, you can barely bowl a bowling ball, much less throw it accurately fifty yards and hit somebody in the chest. Um, he is, he is the, he is this, this massive giant. But his parents were not both human. His parents, Genesis six tells us, one is a fallen angel, one is a human. Now, these, this, this offspring, if you will, is what the Bible refers to as the Nephilim. And the giants or the mighty men of renown. So we'll go and do some, some due diligence and we'll walk all through scripture for that. But here's what I want you to think about. When you look at who inhabited the promised land to prevent the Israelites from, from gaining access to it. If Joshua is a parallel to the book of Ephesians. What is, what giants has Satan put in your life? Are they just earthly problems? Is it just bad luck? Is it just coincidence that, you know, is it Murphy's Law? Or is it half-human condition? But half demonic attack? When we look at Jo- Joshua. We'll see half-human, half-fallen angel, half evil. Beings pr- fighting against God's children. Ephesians is a parallel, and Ephesians six talks about the armor of God. And too many of us don't put on the armor of God every day, we don't speak it on, we don't put it on, we don't really think about it. We put on clothes, but we don't put on our spiritual clothes. Sometimes, and I'm trying to preface this carefully, sometimes you didn't just lose your job. Sometimes you lost your job, but there was an enemy agenda behind it. And so there was a demonic force that was spreading. Gossip, or spreading propaganda again, or falsehood against you. Sometimes you just lost your job because the employer just needed to cut your job. Sometimes you had that wreck because you were driving bad. Sometimes the enemy is out. To cause things. So sometimes too many of us always blame everything on the devil. And sometimes all of us always blame it on just being human. But what I'm trying to get us to grasp is, the enemy is forming some Goliaths against you. Or against us. He's forming some Goliaths against our nation. So he will take like a physical, uh, uh, coronavirus, and I wasn't, this is, none of this is planned, so I may stick, you know. The enemy will take a physical virus. Man-made or not, doesn't matter. He'll take a physical virus, but then he'll mix it with a demon of fear. Or he'll mix it with the demon of paranoia. Or he'll mix it with the spirit of greed. Or he'll mix it with the spirit of violence. Or he'll mix it with this. What he'll do is he'll take a human thing. But then impregnate it with the demon spirit. And then all of a sudden, something that we could have handled on the human side. Is now bigger than we can handle in the human world. So now we gotta have a spiritual component called the Holy Spirit come in to help battle it. Other times. We can easily see. That that is just purely an evil, at a evil thing, we can, we can just see that, that, uh, child. Uh, trafficking is, is pure evil, there's no normal humanness about that, that is a, a, a demon spirit of, of great perversion. So, so what I want us to see is when the enemy mixes. And gets involved in things, when the enemy takes, uh, a, 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 an event. And turns it into something. That brings panic. Fear. Violence. You know, a- a- and just starts to monopolize, and it just seems like, where did this come from all of a sudden, I mean, we're, all of a sudden? You know, the world shut down, all of a sudden, small businesses are, are, are all, you know, you know. All of a sudden, the, the economy just tanks overnight? Haven't we battled some of these things before? We have. But we may not have battled that thing that was mixed. With the bloodline of hell. So just as we can look back and say, well, you know, David sure was brave, and, and children, we just need to be brave. Well, those forty Israelites that Goliath stared down. Those forty thousand Israelites. Those were big guys. They were some mean, rough and tough, punch you in the face, laugh, you know. Just rough soldiers, they weren't wimps. Something about Goliath intimidated them. It wasn't just his size, they had seen big guys before. But it was the demon spirit raging in him. That brought an invisible. An invisible angel to the battle. And it wasn't holy. Just as God. Has given you the strength through the Spirit of God, the Holy Spirit, to defeat the enemy. He did it for David. So I want us to see in this day and age, I want you just to kinda gauge some things. I'm not trying to be too specific, cause I don't wanna get political. Um, I want you to make your own judgments and your own assessments, but. For example, if we had a shortage of, of, um, peaches, because. Um, you know, uh, or oranges, I meant, oranges in Florida, uh, if we had a, if we had a nationwide shortage of oranges. And we're all scratching our heads, well, why, why are oranges so expensive, and why are oranges ten bucks a, a pound right now, and? Where'd all the oranges go, well, then we could like turn on the news and see, oh, man, all the, uh, orange, uh. Orchards in Florida got destroyed by a hurricane, well, we could, we could see, oh, that's just a human condition. But when we see something like a virus mixed with this spirit of fear. We're all scratching our heads, like, how did this get so out of control? Not saying it's not real, please don't hear that. I'm just talking about the fear behind it. Don't let the enemy. Intimidate you with giants in your land. In your marriage? How did that, this is a, this is, this is the analogy I've been trying to struggle with for this whole time. How did that little argument blow up in us? Sleeping in separate rooms? It was just toothpaste. Yeah, but then the enemy came in. And started to churn your emotions and, and bring up fourteen years ago, and bring up. Everything and bring out all the, the knives, if you will. Please see the, please see the correlation here. The physical battle. The spiritual battle. Now, fast forward to the, to the return of Christ. Will the Nephilim and the giants be here at the end of days? The answer is yes, they're already here. Satan's not gonna bring twelve-foot giants to walk around. Because it would be very easy to go, oh, well, I think that's them. What if the disguise is very different this time? What if there is things? And people that, uh, and events that are mixed? So I want you to start to say, okay, God, open my eyes. Because this battle's real. But this spiritual battle is real also. Please see that. Please don't believe the lie. That, that we're not really in a spiritual battle. It's not all economical. It's not all politics, it's not all financial, it's not all health, it's not all mental. It's not all physical. It's all of that plus a spiritual side. And we've gotta see this spiritual side to it. And when we see it. We'll have victory through. The Holy Spirit, through Jesus Christ. Amen, thank you so much for joining us, I pray that God has, has sparked something in you. I pray that you can see the value of honoring God with your money. Honoring God with, with the first fruits of your money. Honoring God with, with, uh, with his word that you would let out of Jericho shout, I pray that, uh, I think, I, I forgot who preached the message. But there's a great preacher that says, don't stop on six. Uh, I pray that you don't circle Jericho six times and then give up. But go that seventh round, don't, don't stop. You know, get back up, uh, a- as, as a friend of mine would say, get back up, fight again, fight again. Don't stop on six with, when it comes to Jericho. God bless you, we'll see you next time, next Tuesday, six thirty, if you're looking for a church, join us live, in person, eleven AM, or eleven AM here online. God bless you, we'll see you next time.